All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, November 8th, 2018. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. It's 5:15 PM. I've called the meeting to order. First item would be the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Roll call this evening. We have six members present. Councilmember Harold, are you with us via, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Asparza, are you with us via phone?
I am.
Great. So we have all seven folks here today. First item on our agenda would be the consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meeting, and, excuse me, and a resolution to declare certain personal property surplus.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings, and also to approve Resolution Number 2018-39 declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee and authorizing the Department of Public Works to dispose of the personal property identified therein.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt the evening's consent items, which includes the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings, and for adoption of Resolution 2018-39. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda today would be citizen comment. This would be a time when we would allow any member of the audience to address the council. We'd ask for your name and address for the record, and we give you about three minutes or so. So if anybody would like to address the city council on any item not on the evening's agenda? See note takers. We have two presentations. The first is regarding Small Business Saturday, which is coming up soon. So who has that proclamation? Councilmember Koulas.
Whereas the city of Wenatchee celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017, and whereas small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long, and whereas 73% of consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family, and whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small independently owned businesses was to support their community, and whereas Wenatchee/Washington supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this eighth day of November, 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Koulas. Linda and Meredith, come on up.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Small.
Hold it.
Oh, it's a different design on the bag.
Oh, hey, this is so cool.
Aren't they cool?
Great, thank you.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meredith, thank you.
You have your merit.
Get your picture taken.
Hi, girl.
One more.
You want to address the council?
I do.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Small Business Saturday, the day after the day after Thanksgiving, right? And it is for some of our retail merchants, some of their biggest day, because this community embraces small business and our small local business. I just want to say a special thank you to the mayor for proclaiming November, the flags will remain the entire month, to honor our 21 heroes, and tomorrow in your newspaper will be the stories of all 21 of our heroes, and the mayor did a preface for us. So, thank you. Councilmember Linda Harold, her son's hero banner is hanging in front of the convention center, and Councilmember Poyer, he sponsored a bunker, vets serving vets. So we want to say a special thank you, and thank you for letting us come and be the advocate for small business. Pretty cool, the name. Yeah, thank you.
Christmas lights? Lights?
Where are we? Hi, gentlemen, Christmas lights, right? We're on it. We're working on it. We're close. Look at him. And I have witnesses now. We're close. Thank you.
All right. And next, we have a presentation from the Wenatchee Chamber of Commerce regarding the legislative update. So Shiloh and Bruce, come on up.
I'm going to give you guys a handout. Thank you for having us. So in a meeting with Mayor Coontz, oh, maybe three weeks ago now, I think, we were talking about some of the things the chamber's been working on, and he was gracious enough to invite myself and Bruce here tonight to talk a little bit about the chamber's advocacy program and to introduce the council to Bruce Beckett, who has been the chamber's lobbyist for two years now, hoping to retain him again for the 2019 session. So the chamber, a few years ago, authorized me to find a lobbyist to begin looking at how can we be more effective in Olympia on behalf of the business community and the greater community as a whole. And you may recall, as part of the Our Valley, Our Future project, the chamber's been tasked with having a community liaison connected to Olympia on behalf of that greater project in the region. And so that was the first project that Bruce officially advocated for on behalf of the community last year, but leading up to that, the chamber has been going through a series of evaluations on how do we want that program to be structured? And so we now have a committee, it can be up to 15 people, we have 11 chamber members that are serving on the committee. They have worked the first year with Bruce, kind of familiarizing themselves with the legislature, as well as establishing how do we want to engage our membership to proactively work with our local, state, and federal representatives on issues that are important to the business community, and then to set out and create their first legislative or policy and guiding principles document, which I just handed out to all of you. And so we surveyed the membership earlier this summer and got a lot of good feedback and came with all of that to the advocacy committee, who then reviewed that and said, you know, that the leading issues that our members are talking to us about are those that are before you. So, you know, labor and workforce development, looking at housing, that's no surprise, I'm sure, to many, looking at forest health and outdoor recreation, tourism, and then regulatory. And regulatory is the most omnibus or elusive to us at this point, other than we know that there's a lot of things that are happening, whether that's around minimum wage, or paid family leave, or potentially scheduling. I'm trying to think of, like, predict, secure scheduling. It was predictive scheduling before. So those kind of issues that continue to impact and we're reacting to them, or things happening at the agency level around executive administrative and professional salary wages. And so Bruce has been representing us on that kind of stuff and advising us as well. So we wanted to take a moment to introduce you to Bruce. Bruce is kind of going to recap for you what we've had him up to the last couple of years, and then talk a little bit about an issue that we're hoping to get to partner with the city on around housing this next legislative session, and then any questions about what we're doing. We really are looking to create an environment with our local governments where you think we're top of mind, when there's an issue that could impact the business community, which Wenatchee's been very, city of Wenatchee's been very proactive already, coming to us and saying, here's, we need your feedback. And so there's now an avenue for which that can work through the chamber and the membership, and then the board can make a decision. So I'm going to turn it over to Bruce for a few minutes, just to tell you some of the stuff we've done so far.
Thanks. First of all, it's a privilege being over here. The last, I started working with Shiloh in this capacity in January of 2017, so I think it was about a week or so before the legislature actually went in, went into session. And at the time, the chamber, or Shiloh in particular, and Josh Jorgensen, were really looking to help educate themselves to bring their membership along about what we could do and what we could not do. And so we started kind of with almost a zero, if you will, issue agenda, but that first year, I worked on the statewide tourism marketing issue, did a lot of work in the community on wildfire and forest health that led to, well, part of leading to the $15 million and also the funding for the era of Megafires project. The Main Street Program Tax Credit was a project that I didn't know anything about until it actually was out there, and then we went to work on it. And then two other things I worked on that year were the Shiloh County Emergency Operations Center with Sheriff Burnett. And every Monday morning, when I get on the phone with Shiloh's advocacy committee, there'd be this voice on the phone, is one of your staff people, asking about the housing issue. And so I did monitor what was going on in housing legislation. Honestly, we didn't engage, but I used to go and monitor the hearings and get very confused by the whole issue. As we entered into 2018, the group, your leadership team in the community for Our Valley, Our Future, was feeling fairly overwhelmed with everything that they had taken on. And we had an inquiry from the governor's deputy chief of staff, Drew Shirck, as to whether there was anything they could do to help. And that led to really about a five-month effort to secure funding for Our Valley, Our Future, which was successful, and thank you, Mayor Coontz, for coming over and visiting once or twice about that issue. We also worked on the tourism issue and finally got that over the goal line. The chamber took an active position on the carbon tax proposal. We've worked on some rulemaking for her business, for your, Shiloh's business members, and we're prepping for 2019 right now. And that's where the housing discussion kind of comes front and center, because there's been an awful lot of conversation and work in this community on the issue. And I'll turn it back over. Oh, two more things. It is really a privilege to work in this community, and my wife and I run a small business of our own, and we've had the chance to work on your Apple Capital Loop project, and that's been incredibly gratifying and incredibly a learning experience. And I have the chance to work on the Mission Ridge Expansion Project. So two really, really exciting things that I had the chance to work on in addition to Shiloh's portfolio. Thank you.
So as Bruce alluded to, we're starting to prep for 2019, and a big part of today is as you look at what your priorities will be going up to the Association of Washington Cities, as it affects cities, but then specifically to the community, we already have the Shiloh Douglas Transportation Council's priorities, so we're aware of that. Potentially looking at working on housing, whether that's legislation or a budget program with Representative Steele in the city to help alleviate some of the workforce housing issues, or other issues that may come up if we can be of help. I mean, anytime I know that someone from the community is heading to Olympia, I always give Bruce a heads up, and a lot of times, he goes and finds the mayor on the steps or something like that. But we're really trying to position ourselves for a resource and really trying to learn where we can be effective and elevate the profile of the chamber and Wenatchee and Olympia. We, in this community, had, you know, 30 years of an individual legislator, be it a speaker, caucus chair, like Senator Parlet, in five-quarter negotiations, and so we had a lot of really great access. And we have new legislators that are competent and helpful for us, but they don't have the same level of relationships, and they're not sitting always on the same committees where we need them to be. So having Bruce there to help has been really, really great, not only for us as an organization, but for our delegation. And so we just wanted to come here tonight and make sure all of you know who Bruce is. I know some of you will probably make the trip over to Olympia at some point and really say if we can partner, if there's things we can do at the local level with you guys on issues that can impact the businesses and/or at the state level, or now that we have a new congressional legislator, who we had both of them in, building that relationship, we're here to help. So thank you for the time, and if you have any questions for us, we're happy to entertain them.
I would just say, we had a very successful legislative session last year for a city our size, with the stuff you talked about, plus some money for NEPA and other stuff. So we really did remarkable well, and Bruce deserves a lot of the credit. He's on the floor over there, pushing us along, getting us where we need to go. So if you're ever over there, even though you're hired by the chamber, he's sort of our lobbyist as well, so if we ever need-
You're a member of the chamber.
Yeah. So he's available to us, and was very helpful. And I know, at least for the 2019 session, Senator Hobbs today mentioned perhaps a transportation funding package now that the carbon tax failed. So I think we'll be watching that very closely. And then for us, I think housing is still a big issue. We've got a, I don't know if we're going to draft a bill or what we're going to do, Steve, on our little housing stuff, but whether we're a pilot project or whatever, but I know we're attempting to get something through. And we're going to go over and see Drew Shirck, what, in a couple of weeks, Allison?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we'll go over and say, hi Drew, how did Drew and a few others. So should be an interesting session.
Should be.
Anything that the chamber's working on in particular that I should know about?
I mean, housing is going to be our big one, so we're going to be helping on that particular piece. And the other one for us, really, and it affects all businesses in the community, is what Ellen and I will do with the executive administrative professional rulemaking. And so maybe you wanted to spend a brief minute kind of laying the issue for them and why we're so concerned with that, but that'll affect nonprofits, small, anybody who has exempt employees. So the ag industry could be disproportionately hit with that for us. It's huge. It's a huge potential impact. We had this issue come up at the end of the Obama administration. They had some proposed rules that would drastically elevate the annual wages that you'd have to pay to qualify in those areas. And now the state's looking at doing something similar outside of the legislative process, but through the rulemaking process. If you just want to take a quick second to talk about that.
Yeah. If everyone's minds can go back, if you paid any attention to it, towards the last year or two of the Obama administration, they proposed to raise the exemption level, if you will, for who qualifies for overtime pay versus doesn't qualify for overtime pay. So exempt versus non-exempt status for employment. That was tossed out in the federal courts, and as a consequence, a number of members of the legislature asked our Department of Labor and Industries to take it on at the state level. And they're, they, Labor and Industries thought they would be done by now. In reality, they've only really just now been getting down to the details, and they're proposing to essentially double the wage thresholds for overtime exemption, but they're getting tremendous amount of good feedback and pushback on the ideas from really the nonprofit sectors, the care centers, the people who, hospitals, and people who care for elderly are really, really beginning to provide some really substantive input. So I think there's some time here yet that they're struggling with it, and perhaps the federal process will take over again, so.
The other thing, I'll just quickly put on the other arm of the chamber, which is tourism. We have been engaged with the Washington Tourism Alliance for the last four years. I've been on the board for the last three years, and now the co-chair of the board as that process, the statewide tourism marketing legislation that Bruce is referencing. I was the ledge chair that got to work on that particular issue. So the bill passed. WTA was identified as the sole contractor, eligible contractor, for that contract. The contract has been signed by both the authority overseeing the WTA or the contractor, and since we're waiting for the Department of Enterprise Services to approve the award, and then we'll get to work, but that means the statewide tourism program is coming back to our state, which we have been absent from that since 2011 for seven years, and our community is ahead in that. We are shaping it, we're leading it, we're directly inputting on what that should look like, and that's great for us in the sense that part of the goal is to get our travelers out of Sea-Tac, out of the Seattle area, over into more rural Washington. And so with Shiloh County having the largest per capita expenditure related tourism than any other county in the state, we have a lot of good things going here, but it also means we're more positioned to start getting us out into other states early on. So that's pretty exciting that we're doing that as well, and we're hoping that we'll see some start of that happening this summer in terms of ad campaigns getting ready to go out. So it's fun. It's a fun time to be part of the chamber, and we have some really great partners like the city of Wenatchee, and we're just thrilled. Bruce and I spent the day presenting to Ag Forestry Class 41, and it was a lot of fun, talking about this community and the things that we're doing, and the collaboration between organizations, and how that helps us be successful within the government process at higher levels. So thank you for being a member of the chamber and for having us here tonight.
And I would mention, just at the federal level, Bruce's wife, Jeanne, is our lobbyist in Washington DC, so working on the Infra Project with us. So round two, I just read today, is about ready to get started. I don't know what NOFO stands for, but-
(inaudible).
Actually, so NOFO is supposed to be, don't mispronounce that one, NOFO.
Nofo.
(laughing). Starting soon. So we'll be doing some sort of grant application, January-ish? What? (laughing).
(inaudible).
Okay. So Steve and some of his crew are going back to DC, I think, the end of November, and then we'll be back probably again, I don't know, sometime next year to try to spearhead the Infra Grant one more time. And Bruce's wife, Jeanne, has been very helpful with that, so.
Great.
Great. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, guys.
You bet.
Okay. We have a number of action items tonight, and then we have three public hearing items tonight. For the action items, I generally don't take public comment, but if someone has, wants to talk about any of the action items, you can just raise your hand, and we'll make sure you get up and get a chance to say something to the council members. So the first item this evening is the interlocal agreement for district court services. Allison? What? No one's laughing at you.
I was asking Brad if he wanted to come along.
Oh, okay.
Since his name is on the memo also. Allison Williams, Executive Services Director, and Brad-
Brad Finance Director.
So we're here with, in front of you this evening, we have a new four-year interlocal agreement with District Court for providing those services for us. You had all of the background in your packet, many years of experience there in terms of our court filings and what they've done for us on probation. And after a review of their budget, the level of our filing fees, and kind of their five-year average, we agreed to raise our rate to the $80 per filing fee, so that is one component. The second component is the increase in probation services, raising that from $45,000 to $60,000 to reflect more of their cost of providing the services. We are the one city that gets our fines and forfeitures returned to us, and so for the city, this is still working out financially to a positive benefit for us. And we have, so this would give us a new four-year agreement, and we would ask for your approval.
We did spend quite a little bit of time talking about this at Finance Committee today in terms of sort of District Court, and when the city may or may not do its own municipal court, and there's a couple of year window we would have to give the county if we decided to do that. Your new city hall, as it's being designed, will have a District Court component to it. So, but we're two or three years away from doing that, and so it seems like this contract's appropriate, and in a couple of years, we'll look at it again and start making some decisions as to whether or not we're doing our own municipal court or not. But at this point, the new city hall does have a court component built into it, the way that's being drafted. And you're going to see that in the next three or four weeks. We'll get you some update drawings and where we're at with that.
One of the things that's outside of the county's control, the judge's salaries is set by the state. And so that is a cost increase that has continued to be an issue in their cost of providing services, just the overall administration cost. So that was a reality that we're recognizing in this contract.
All right. Any questions for Allison or Brad? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to approve the interlocal agreement for providing District Court services between Shiloh County and the city of Wenatchee.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Poyer, to approve the interlocal agreement for providing District Court services between Shiloh County and the city of Wenatchee, and authorizing the mayor's signature. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is Project 1803, North Miller Storm Drain. Rob?
Good evening. Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director. We're here tonight to present the final budget on the Miller Street Storm project. You may remember this project, it was one that we acted quickly on to replace 500 feet of storm main in Miller Avenue in advance of the Department of Transportation paving. We, council had initially authorized, after the bids were due, of $454,933 during construction. There were two change orders. One was due to extra excavation, which then led to the couple of days of project delay, which then added to traffic control. We also had a couple of changes to some channeling on some manholes. So the change orders resulted in an increase of $45,964, which included the 1% for art, bringing the total project cost to $500,897. This is being paid for with our Public Works Trust Fund that we have, we're eligible for. This is our first draw on that, and will be paid back with stormwater utility funding.
Rob, I don't know the correct terminology, but we did our own thinking it was going to be 500 originally. Wasn't it something like that?
When we originally went into the project, we just, we just looked at it, and we said, well, this is probably about a half a million, so we-
And then we get a bid for 450.
450.
Right, so we're basically-
Yeah, so we-
We're pretty close.
Yeah. Yeah, the, initially, the SCJ Alliance had a lower estimate, but I think given the, we asked for them to build that project in three weeks, and so we, yeah, the bids were higher than we anticipated, but they did get the job done, so.
And I think the timing is really important, because obviously, the paving went right over the top of that, that Washita was doing, so it was nice to get this done and quickly, and just a couple of small change orders, my understanding?
Robin, in the total, you know, in the overall picture of things, you know, that there was that section that obviously had some issues and had to be fixed, what are we looking at as we go up the street? Are we looking at similar kinds of things down the road here that we're going to have to replace that all the way up?
When we had decided to go out and try to ramp up for this project, we actually went and re-videos 1,600 feet of storm main from where Shiloh veers off of Miller, all the way over to behind the Denny's, because initially, we were told those, that all of that was bad pipe, and of the 1,600 feet, only 500 had to be replaced. What we'll be doing this next year, we'll be videoing that storm line on Miller all the way down to Ninth, and verifying that it is in good shape. That was, the Public Works Trust Fund was set up to pay for that, but we're going to re-video it and make sure that it needs, we wouldn't want to do it if it's not necessary, of course. So.
And then are we going to do it on the other side of the street as well, heading towards St. Melton, down that area as well?
We'll, yes, we'll also re-video that, and I believe that's in the scope of the whole Confluence Parkway, that whole rebuild through there.
Right. Any questions for Rob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that the city council amend the project budget to pay for the increased construction costs and further authorize the mayor to approve the construction change order.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Markart, to approve the amended project budget to pay for increased construction costs and further authorize the mayor to approve the construction change order. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. All right. Next item is regarding the warrant annexation. Matt, you doing this one?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Parsons, Associate Planner. The city's received a petition for annexation from property owner at the corner of Pershing and McKittrick. We've looked into including other parcels. As you'll see, I included the value, the assessed values of the parcels, and they wouldn't be able to force any other property owners in. We actually took an extra step of actually mailed some letters to surrounding property owners, see if anybody was interested in joining. Didn't have any affirmative responses, so we did some homework, trying to- Didn't have any affirmative responses, so we did some homework, trying to include other properties, and it ends up just being this one. As a default, we usually include adjacent right-of-way, but I always consult with the city engineer about how much and exactly, and those sorts of things. His recommendation was that we not annex the right-of-way Pershing Street at this time. I think he had some justifications regarding substandard, those sorts of things, and so, that's... I've carried that recommendation into this packet. This, as you know, there's three times when you see the annexations before you. This is the first of the three, and so, we're setting the boundary that'll be put into the petition, deciding on indebtedness and zoning, which isn't changing, so. Any questions on this one?
I'm just a little curious on the street issue, because we already have a little chunk of that on Pershing Street. So, I was just curious why we wouldn't go ahead and do that at the same time.
Sure. Gary, at the time, I wanted to talk to him, he said he would be here tonight and would be able to answer questions. Looks like he's not here.
Revision two or three, we'll ask them.
Yeah.
Yeah. It really looks like it's more of the McKittrick Street right-of-way that we have, and if we took Pershing, we'd have, what, 100 and some feet of city, and then, the rest county, and it leads to the snowplows lifting their blades as they travel through, so...
Sure.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the City Council to approve the annexation boundary proposed in the 10% annexation petition for the proposed annexation area located in an unincorporated area within the urban growth boundary, to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as it is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city as residential moderate, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to approve the annexation boundary proposed in the 10% annexation petition for the proposed annexation area located in an incorporated area within the urban growth boundary, to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as it is set forth in the comp plan as residential moderate, and require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed. Discussion?
Just, I guess, one question dealing with, you know, the... I think in your report, you said something that they're... The owner's going to make... Do some development or something there. I mean, there's already a structure or house there.
Yes.
So, is this in preparation for... Obviously, now, they can connect to the sewer and do all these kinds of things, so...
Correct. I think I just had some preliminary discussions. The owner would like to... I think there's a manufactured home there now, and they're gonna pull that off and replace it with more units. I think there's a... It's large enough you could have more. I don't remember exactly how many, but he and I have spoken kind of in a preliminary fashion, having done a pre-application meeting or anything like that. But he has some plans for development there.
Yeah. I'm a little disappointed we, you know, couldn't get some additional pieces to go along with that. You know, a lot at a time, you know, in the next 250 years, we might be able to get all of that annexed into the city, but...
Right.
Any rate, it's good to... One at a time, we'll do it.
Yep.
Slowly but surely. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Mr. King, we got a couple of items for you. We got a McKittrick Street right-of-way and a Columbia Street right-of-way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve King, Economic Development Director. Just start with a little bit of history. As you'll recall, after the Sleepy Hollow fires, we worked... Went into negotiation with Northwest Wholesale and purchased their property as part of their relocation, understanding that, in accordance with the North Wenatchee Master Plan, that we wanted to extend McKittrick Street straight across North Wenatchee Avenue, eventually under the tracks, and all the way out to Miller Street. So, in buying Northwest Wholesale, we understood that we were doing that partly to facilitate the establishment of right-of-way and infrastructure. So, that transaction happened, and also, in the meantime, the... Through our McKittrick Street Signal Project, engineering, Public Works and engineering folks have been working, and they've bought some of the right-of-way from McKittrick Street with the grants that we received. So, in your agenda packet, you'll see a couple of maps. You'll see some that... Right-of-way that's already been purchased with that grant, and then, you'll see in the agenda packet a red box that indicates some additional right-of-way, which we already own, but we own it in fee simple format, and so, we're basically asking for your action to issue a quick claim deed to convert it to public right-of-way, so that we can officially say we have that right-of-way and it meets the width requirements that we need for McKittrick Street.
I don't think I've ever done one of these.
Yeah.
So, any questions for Steve?
Yeah. Steve, on the... This is... I think it's on page 57 of our packet, but the map there that shows the right-of-way adjacent to Wenatchee Avenue there.
Mm-hmm.
The part... The width of the... Of the right-of-way that goes through there, but there... As you come off of Wenatchee Avenue into the... Into that, what will be a street, there's a Lot 12, and there's a chunk of that that goes into the... Into that right-of-way area, and it's a little niche in... Or notch, I guess, in there. Is that... I guess, I'm looking at it in terms of street development. Is that, you know, is that something we're gonna have to buy later, or...
We're in the process of buying that right now. That's actually owned by adjoining property owners, so the Northwest Wholesale didn't have the full width, and so, yeah, that's under current acquisition. So, it'll be a full 80.
So, if someone were done, we'll have the full one there. Okay.
Yeah.
And then, there was the... The other thing was a question of mine on the... This is on page 62 of our packet, where it shows the, you know, basically, the intersection between what you're, I guess, what you're calling E Street or E1 Street. There's a misalignment there. Is there some reason why we don't have them aligned?
Just a... It's a small offset to align up with what... Where the future road go through Michelson and pass Save Mart. So, where it connects to Holly Street, there's a little bit of a misalignment. It's... You won't even notice.
Yeah, I know. It's not much, but I just wondered what the reason for that. So, that allows the... That north leg to go... That will be then aligned when it gets out that far onto Holly Street. Okay. Good.
And the legal reason we go about taking the property that we already own and make it public right-of-way, does it change the overall...
Yeah, so...
Help me figure that out.
What it's doing is creating right-of-way, and that will create these remnant parcels. And so, we'll own the remnant parcels as fee simple, and we'll be able to surplus those, and then, sell them off. And the right-of-way is... So, right-of-way is really an easement to the public, so by converting it to right-of-way, it takes on a new meaning in properties.
Okay. I thought you could dedicate it, and it really has got to deed it.
Yeah, it's... It's just the instrument to dedicate. The deed is... The quick claim deed is the instrument to dedicate.
Got it. All right. Any other questions for Steve? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion for City Council to grant a quick claim deed converting fee simple city-owned property to public right-of-way for McKittrick Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker. Second by Councilmember Harold, to grant a quick claim deed converting fee simple city-owned property to public right-of-way for McKittrick Street. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Columbia Street right-of-way, what's going on here, Steve?
Same thing, same area. So, the north-south street actually is, believe it or not, it's in line with Columbia Street downtown, parallel to the railroad tracks, and so...
Yep, it is.
It is.
Really?
Yeah. It's Columbia Street.
That's Columbia Street. It's just gonna have like a 16... I don't remember the number. It's gonna have a large address number compared to downtown. So, yeah, so this is basically converting that right-of-way, or that area within the Northwest Wholesale property to public right-of-way, which will be known as Columbia Street. In the council packet, the surveyor calls it ES-1, but it's really Columbia Street.
That struck me as kind of an oddity, because when you take Columbia Street where it is, and it, you know, it basically dead-ends at the convent... Or at the hotel there, and then, you look at all the properties that, between there and out to here, the chance of there being a complete street all the way through seems...
Might be a couple hundred years.
Yeah. About the same time, we get all the rest of the property. But, yeah, that mean is... Is there some reason why that stays... You know, it has to stay Columbia Street, or...
I look at it this way. I've been to cities like Spokane and Seattle, where John Street's here...
Oh, yeah.
And it's over here, you know...
We've got a bunch of it in the city, you know...
Well, Second Street is a good example.
Grid alignment.
Yep.
Works for dispatch, and...
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay. Actually, Columbia Street has a break in it down to George Siller Bridge, right? Down to local packaging, and then, it restarts again on this... By the Salvation Army. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't get a lot of respect, did it?
I might make a motion.
I'll make a motion for the City Council to grant a quick claim deed converting fee simple city-owned property to public right-of-way for Columbia Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markart, to grant a quick claim deed converting fee simple city-owned property to public right-of-way for Columbia Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markart, to grant a quick claim deed converting fee simple city-owned property to public right-of-way for Columbia Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markart, to grant a quick claim deed converting fee simple city-owned property to public right-of-way for Columbia Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markart, to grant a quick claim deed converting fee simple city-owned property to public right-of-way for Columbia Street. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. So, item F is regarding some limited tax general obligation bonds. I see our bond counsel, Roy Cogan, just snuck in here. Texted me, said there was a car accident coming out of Quincy, so he would have been here an hour ago. Brad, you wanna come up? And I think at this point, we'll take a... Here a presentation, ask questions, and I'll see if any members of the audience wish to ask us any questions before I turn over to the council. So, gentlemen?
Good evening. So, we've got before you ordinance 2018-32, which authorizes the mayor and staff to issue bonds, not to exceed $20 million. As part of that $20 million, one of the major pieces of that is $12 million for financing the new City Hall remodel across the street. And also, what we're building into this is about $5 or $6 million as a placeholder for some street foothills connection work that is still being developed, and they've got engineering... They've got an engineering firm doing a study to come up with a hard estimate number. I know the early numbers that were thrown around were between $5 and $6 million, so we've got that as a placeholder. That's another reason why we're looking at probably not issuing these bonds until fall of 2019. Hopefully, somewhere in that ballpark. We're not exactly sure quite when yet. The reason we have it at $20 million instead of... Instead of $18 million is just because, as these projects are developed in the next year, so we want a little bit of cushion in case... In case we need to borrow more. Looking at the rates that we expect to get when we issue debt in a year from now, our... Dave Tregus, our underwriter, he has said probably around 4.5% will be what our... Total cost will be, total interest cost will be on those. The ordinance does say up to 6% because we just don't know what rates are gonna do in the next year or two. We hope that they will stay... I think the... Right now, I think the rates are around 3.9 to 4%, and we're seeing those may go up to 4.5% in the next year. So, as far as... So, we have talked about how we will pay for the federal building piece. That $12 million for 20-year bonds will be about $1 million, maybe just under $1 million a year that we will have to pay for principal and interest costs. To fund that, we've talked about... We talked about a few different plans in Finance Committee and in Public Works Committee. We went over a few different options of how we could fund it, and both Finance and Public Works Committee approved a certain... A certain plan, and just to... I dropped these. Just to kind of refresh.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep. This is the option that we settled on. So, for the approximately $1 million per year that we need to... Need to have available to make these bond payments, which I think that's a little bit... It's probably a little on the conservative side. Hopefully, we won't need quite that much, but it's pretty close. Of that, 340, approximately a third of this, would come from our... From our real estate excise tax funds. So, we have... We get revenue from real estate excise tax transactions, and currently, some of that is being used to pay for the public services building, but not all of it, so we have a little room to be able to use the REIT funds. Then, a couple of weeks ago, or I guess, a month ago, the... When the council adopted the property taxes with ordinance 2018-28 for the 2019 property taxes, they also approved an increase of $330,000 for a new property tax levy, which ends up being just... We had talked about in our committees, we talked about doing an 11 cents per thousand property tax increase, but with the new... With the increased preliminary values or assessed values for the... For the city, that actually ends up only being about 9.5 cents per thousand. So, it's... Ends up... Yeah. It ends up being a little less than what we had originally talked about. And then, the third piece, the other third of this, would be there's currently a voted levy that's being used to pay for the police station building, and that will expire in 2021, and so, that... That property tax amount would go away, starting in 2022. However, for the federal building remodel, we expect to need to be able to continue that levy to make up the other third of this. So, I guess, at this point, this ordinance will allow us to go to the bond market when we are ready to pull the trigger. So, I guess, if you have any questions for me on the funding side, or if you've got any questions for Roy on the technical side of issuing debt...
Let's hear from Roy, and then, we'll turn over to the council for any actions, and I've got a couple of comments, and then, we'll see if any members of the audience want to address the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Roy Cogan, Q-Tech Rock. As Brad indicated, we have before you ordinance 2018-32, which is a delegating parameter ordinance that authorizes, at the discretion of the mayor or finance director, for the city to issue up to $20 million of limited tax general obligation bonds. It's not a blanket delegation. We boxed that discretion in, and as Brad indicated, the maximum principal amount of the bonds is $20 million. The true interest cost cannot exceed 6%. The final maturity of the bonds cannot be beyond December 1, 2040, so they're anticipated to be 20-year bonds. The principal amount of the bonds, impetus need to begin in 2021 and conclude no later than 2040. No interest rate can exceed 6%. And the bonds must be delivered no later than December 31, 2020. If they're not, this authorization expires. In drafting the resolution, we paid particular attention to the city's acquisition of its three units for its new City Hall, and we've had the pleasure of working with the city staff on various... Looking at those agreements over the last year or so, and, you know, we've learned that it was material to the... Local tell that the city commit to improve its units, because they didn't want to just commit to improve its units because they didn't want to just to buy the building and have most of it remain unempty. So, this ordinance also commits the city to improve its units. And the security for the bonds, you know, Brad indicated in his handout that there's three sources of revenue. It's really general fund revenue, your pledging, your full faith and credit within your non-voted debt capacity, as you do with all of your limited tax general obligation bonds. So, that's what bondholders get to look at, and where that money comes from will be the three different pots that Brad has set forth in his handout tonight. Any questions?
My question on the funding side of it is, if we agree to this, that basically locks us into needing to approve the new property tax, the levy continuation, when that expires in 2021. Is that a true statement? I mean, is this basically locking us in that says if we do this and we pull out those bonds, we have to do this later?
I would say so unless we have some amazing new revenue source between now and 2022. There really isn't much other place that we've looked, of course, we look at all of our, all of our revenue sources, and there really isn't much other place to get that $300,000 besides from property taxes in the general fund at this point.
And would that be a councilmatic vote, or would that go to a vote of the people for approving the extension of that levy or converting that existing levy now to...
That can be councilmatic because we have the bonding, or, sorry, not the bonding, we have the property tax capacity currently to be able to do that. Typically, if you don't have a banked authority for property tax, you're limited to the 1% per year increase. However, the city of Wenatchee does have a pretty healthy amount of banked capacity, so we can go more than the 1% with the action of the council. Even though that original, even though that original police station levy was a voted levy, that will expire, it technically won't be extending that levy, it will be letting the one levy expire, and then the councilmanically having a new levy replace it.
So, these are the sort of things we talked about back when we were sort of making the decision about whether or not we're going to purchase the federal building or not. It didn't really make any sense to purchase it without obviously going through the remodel that we talked about at the time. So, we talked about a bunch of different funding mechanisms. This is the one that the Finance Committee, there was some talk of even additional revenue. I think the Finance Committee said, let's bring it sort of down. So, the Finance Committee talked about, at that point, 11 cents and 11 cents because assessed valuations have gone up 10 cents and 10 cents. I think the Public Works Committee was looking at some of the same stuff, and so those two committees both sort of fell on this sort of funding mechanism to get it done. The REIT money that we're currently either is going to pay debt on the Public Works Center or going into our road projects, so there'll be, you know, that is always a sort of a plus and minus. You know, if you have to use some of the REIT, that's money that we're not going to spend on roads. So, I think, I would say the other thing is, in terms of the federal building, you know, we're looking at $12 million. I won't go to the bond market for a penny over that unless all of you guys know what it is we're doing, what road projects we're thinking of doing in the north end, engineers' estimates, so there's some sort of thought about how that would happen. Where, you know, every time we go to the bond market, Roy gets paid a little bit extra, so we're trying to figure out how to combine this into one pot. I think we're a little bit of ways away on exactly what North Wenatchee, excuse me, West Wenatchee, north-south street might look like, so I'm with Brad. I'm guessing sometime late next year, once we get some numbers figured out. But we'll go through the Finance Committee with the Public Works Committee, and ultimately, I'll keep the council abreast of sort of where we're headed with this. But we'll see on the road project. I think that's sort of one that staff is working on, and as you know, a lot of that property up on that western foothills needs some road improvements and sidewalks and access, and this might be a chance to sort of fix some of that for the long term.
How many years we have left for the Public Works Building?
Got about 10. 2028 is when that's once paid off.
And is that separate debt, do you remember?
That may, I think that may be combined with a couple, with, I think it's been refinanced and combined with the convention center, no, not the convention center debt.
No, it's just, it's just...
Was it just that one? Okay.
So, that's one that if it's callable, if we decided to call, we could call? If we got to a callable period, if we had money laying around, if we wanted to?
You could.
Yeah, okay.
And your bonds are normally callable after 10 years from the date of issuance, and they're callable at par.
What was that building, Steve?
It's handout.
Okay, but we may have financed it a year or two after we moved into it, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like you at least to look into that and see where that's at and what the amount of the debt is that's outstanding, just if we have the ability to pay some, save an offer, free up some REIT, we might look at that.
So, in 2021, the property tax will stay the same because it was going to come off. The average house here is 270,000, I don't know how much an average house is, so how much are we talking about what's really...
A $300,000 house is 30 bucks.
30 bucks, okay. Yeah. Thank you. So, really $330 more than right today because one's going to go off, one's going to...
Yeah. You already sort of increased the taxes for next year, so in theory, all of the taxes are already in the system. It's just one will fall off and another will replace it. So, in theory, the increase happened a couple of meetings ago. And what we're doing is we're taking that increase and another one and saying we're going to dedicate it to 20 years of debt service, along with some REIT money.
Right.
To pay for the federal building improvements. And Keith, what I would tell you is if something happens along the route and we do better on North Wenatchee Avenue, and there's a chance to not do that for a year or two, I think we should look at it. But I think for planning purposes, we should plan on this happening, and if things work out better, maybe we pay off some other debt or do some other sorts of things. But I think this is sort of what we have talked about for quite some time.
We're being pretty...
We have talked about it, but I'm going to go back to the argument I've gone back to several times, is that it feels like we're doing things without really seeing what the public is okay with. We bought the federal building, which appeared to be a good deal, but it kept expanding. We kept getting more and more and more of the federal building, and now we're asking, we're not asking the people to pay for it, we're telling them, you're going to pay for it. And this is the problem I have with the idea of being locked into, once the police station or a public, you know, once the police station is paid for, and that would normally go off of people's tax rosters, we're going to put it right back on for them. And I think we've seen what's happened when we've gone to a vote of the people, the school bond was a very public example of people really aren't all that excited about paying more property taxes. We went to the people to get the police station paid for, and they all approved it with the idea that it would be done in 2021. And now, we're going to be locked into in 2021, nope, it's not done because now we got this other project we got to pay for. I'm all for the idea of combining these, you know, going out to the bond market for two things at once to save money. I just, I'm not comfortable with being locked in on this property tax.
So, with that, let me, has any members of the audience wish to address the council on this item? Raise your hand or anything? All right, so you know other takers, then I'll turn over to the council for either any action or any discussion, motion, something like that?
How much extra in fees is it if you borrow like 12 and then come back and borrow eight? I mean, I, obviously, it's going to base on interest, let's assume the interest rate stays the same.
Yep. Excuse me, you have two sets of additional costs. You would have ours, and then you have the underwriter for the bonds, and the cost of preparing an official statement and going through a rating twice. And those are the biggest expenses. The rating agencies now for something like this would be probably in the $40,000 range per rating agency, and the extra cost of preparing an official statement, which would be probably 20,000, the disclosure document for, that we do pay attention to under the federal securities laws. And then the work as bond counsel for, wouldn't be, I don't know, right, a million dollars, probably $15,000 for a bond issued of this sort.
So, 50 or 60 grand?
Well, it depends if we use two rating agencies. You know, that would be 80. And then you have the extra cost of an official statement, which is normally like 25,000, and then, you know, the legal work for the bond ordinance and closing, which would be another 15. So, it could be 120, if my math is correct. Or, yeah.
Clearly better for us to sort of try to do these together if we can, which is sort of why we've got this timing we're trying to work through and...
Yeah, we see cities do that across the state, where they wait and issue bonds when they have a series of projects accumulated, so they're not doing small projects, you know, every couple of years.
All right. Any other questions for Roy or for Brad? If not, entertain a motion if we had one, at least for discussion purposes.
Would you honor, I make a motion for the City Council to approve ordinance number 2018-32 authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of not to exceed $20 million of the city's limited tax general obligation bonds.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Harold, to approve ordinance 2018-32 authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of not to exceed $20 million of the city's limited tax general obligation bonds. Discussion?
My last comment, however, is I'm going to be voting no on this because, again, I don't think we've got enough public input in how we're going to spend their money. So, I'll be voting no.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think, you know, with Keith's comment that the public should have more input, I understand that because we have the banked property tax, we don't really have to go to them, but I would like to see more input by the public on this.
So, what I would say is, we had all kinds of meetings, public meetings, when we made the opportunity to purchase, we used savings cash to purchase the building, they were all involved in that. We had a public hearing three weeks ago where we talked about property taxes. Nobody came to the meeting. We have an agenda that was posted today, and no one chose to come in. I don't know what else you want me to do.
I'm just going to make one comment about this. We have talked about this a lot, it's been on the table for a long time. And right now, in this building alone, we have people stacked on top of people. Public Works is, they're bursting at the seams as well. Now is the time to do this because we can set the costs. If you wait 10 to 15 years, you're probably going to pay double the cost, and that's my concern, because we will have to do it at that point. So, do it while we can, we can keep the cost at this level and not at a higher level, is my opinion. And quite frankly, I think it's been discussed enough. I haven't heard...
I concur with Linda.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
All right, then I'm going to go ahead and call for the question. All right, so all those in favor of adopting ordinance 28-2018-32?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, six in favor, one against. It is 6:18. We're going to take about a three-minute break. For those of you that want us to sign stuff, we can sign stuff, and we'll re-adjourn at All right, everybody.
It was hilarious.
Yeah.
All right. So, this evening, we have three public hearing items. For each of the public hearing items, we will have a presentation from staff, we will ask questions of staff, and then we'll turn over to any member of the audience that wishes to address the council, and then we'll turn it back over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. The first is regarding the Shalane Douglas Land Trust annexation of property near Broadview in Wenatchee. Matt Parsons, you doing that one?
Yes.
You are an annexation professional today.
Good evening, mayor and council. Matt Parsons, associate planner. Here presenting the final step for the Shalane Douglas Land Trust annexation. Like I mentioned before, you see them three times, except for this one. This is actually, I guess, the fifth time because we had to repeat the steps. But of the three, it's the third step, the final step. And so, we have an ordinance before you. We missed some noticing steps, and so we've gone back and repeated that. Contest, there are, the state law requires signs to be posted on site, posted, published in the paper, and then we actually took an additional step just because it's sort of a unique property. step, just because it's sort of a unique property, where we mailed to properties surrounding. Basically, the way the R C W is written, it says, "In a public place in the annexation area." Well, there's no public right-of-way, and even though it's publicly accessible, so we just said, all right, we're gonna go a little bit farther and mail out to property owners. So I believe everything should work out this time, and we'll be able to process through the final steps, once this ordinance is adopted.
And just for my, and maybe Steve King has to answer this. Is this where the Kenzie's Landing Trailhead is gonna go? So this will be a trailhead, and the land trust wants to build that within the city limits and deal with city staff, like they did on the other trailheads, both Castle Rock and Saddle Rock. So this is property they want to bring in. And I believe the R C O grant is, it's rated really high?
Yeah, it's the top acquisition combination project in the state. So grant contracts should come in next year.
But it has not been funded yet, because the legislature has to fund the R C O program, or it has been funded?
Yeah, it's next, it's next budget cycle for the state.
Okay. Staff, any questions for Mr. Parsons? I know this is the fourth or fifth time you've seen this one. No questions for Mr. Parsons. I would turn it over to any member of the audience who addressed, wished to address the council on this annexation of property regarding or close to Broadview. Yeah, come on up. Take a couple of you.
Hi, Brad Schock, Broadview resident. I just want to remind the council, I noticed that to access that property, this gentleman was just showing me, you have to go through a piece of private land right now that's been gated off and has a bunch of construction equipment sitting on it. I just want to remind the council, if there's any swapping to go on, that the, there is a fire egress requirement to be, to be built, so that if, to get access through that, whoever's property that is, to this annexed property for the trailhead, if there's, you know, if some sort of swap is proposed that they can build there, that we still have this fire egress problem that needs to be addressed on that. So I just wanted a quick reminder.
Yeah, Steve, do you want to talk about the fire egress a little bit? Because I know we've talked quite a little bit about it, and sort of where it's headed. And I don't know if you want to bring the map up on the, I don't know if you can bring it up, the map that we're looking at?
You have the map handy, Tammy, that was, come on up, Matt, you can help navigate.
You mean on the packet?
Yes, please, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Schock is exactly right. There's a proposed fire ingress/egress route that would be extended.
Area?
What's that?
The area.
That's a fire ingress/egress route that's proposed off the extension of Maiden Lane. See if we can get a map up here. And that ingress/egress route is proposed to connect over into the Surrey Road, Springwater, Maple area. Our circulation plan has several options.
Take some time, because I think there's other folks that are probably interested in this, Steve. So go ahead and take some time to get your Google Maps up and.
Zoom in here. See if I can get the aerial photo.
Google Maps, he's using G I S.
I don't know what he's using.
Okay.
We're gonna find all of our sewer manhole covers.
Just all manholes.
There we go. That's a good picture. Did you guys see that in the audience?
Yep.
Okay.
Zoom in just a little bit more. Okay, so the area we're talking about is right in here. So here's the end of Maiden Lane. The cursor's showing, yep, okay, good. End of Maiden Lane, and then this is the private property that he's referring to. And then this is the land trust property up here. And so you can see the trail on the aerial photo. This is the hiking trail. And the current, the Broadview impact fee ordinance and are comprehensive circulation plan shows a fire extension access road that would come up off of the end of Maiden Lane and go a couple different routes, either behind the P U D reservoir and connect into this road that's up on top, this private road that's up on top. We also have an option that would come over and circle over and connect into this Maple Street area. And then finally, there's an option that comes over and connects over into the Maple, into the Springwater area. So, so there is, in this area, there is already a easement in place for access to the land trust property. And any development in this area would require that the road be extended for Maiden Lane, so that that, those plans for the extension of a fire access road can be fulfilled.
So therefore, with the gated-off issue, once that, once that is in place, what does that mean for the private property's gate in that area that prevent, I mean, right now, you basically have to kind of walk around their fence to get to the trailhead, because the trail's been fenced off?
Right. So, so this is where we're working with the, with the developers, owner of those properties. So Maiden Lane is planned to be extended for the, to serve that development. There would not be a gate at the end of Maiden Lane. The road would continue to Kenzie's Landing. And then from there, there would be probably a fire access gate that would allow the gravel access road to go up over the top. We're also exploring some other options. But that's what's in the current circulation plan, is a gravel access that doubles as a tray, trail with a fire emergency access gate.
Are you talking about that road being paved all the way to Kenzie's Landing?
Yes.
Okay. By whoever develops the property.
Kenzie's Landing is, is, is my cursor in the right spot, Dave?
Yeah, more or less.
Pretty close. So Kenzie's Landing is a little ways beyond the end of the private property, which is right here. So we would, we would have to get the road extended to Kenzie's Landing.
We've incorporated that in that great template.
To have it paved or just gravel?
Like Steve said, paved to the trailhead with turnaround for emergency vehicles and then crushed rock from there on out.
Okay. And you say paved from the, when I'm looking at the map, from the red line forward, or all the way back from where it turns from pavement to dirt?
Yeah, from the, from the red line on that map to the trailhead.
Got it.
Which is about where the cursor is.
Perfect, thank you.
That answer your question?
Yeah, there's a, on the north end of the property off Maiden Lane, going the other way, there's also several properties that go north up there that has also been an egress issue, because we haven't wanted them to come through our property to do, Broadview property to do that. And this one, and the other question would be, would that satisfy those people with regards to an egress? Because I was thinking about the fire coming that we had that came over the mountain. That egress would have been wholly consumed in about three minutes, not the one you're proposing.
Right. So there's, in, in that same fire access and egress plan, there's two, two access points, aside from Maiden Lane. There's one up at the end of North Road.
Yeah, and then if the bridge was the issue there, the one on North Road, the North Road Bridge, they're gonna fix that.
Yeah, that's, that's in the plan as well. Yeah.
We're sort of waiting for the Parlet property to sort of develop and get the North Road stuff done, I think. And then the fire access road, for lack of a better term, on the other side of Kenzie's Landing, is mostly designed, Steve, and explain, tell me if I'm wrong, for fire trucks to access it, to keep them out of the middle of Broadview, right? So the Broadview folks could leave through the normal way.
That's a big problem.
Yeah, and then the fire trucks would access the other way.
And it lets them fight the fire along the frontage between Surrey Road and the, yeah.
Let's get some established line. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm actually the property owner that owns the property at the end of Maiden Lane.
Yeah, would you mind just coming up to the microphone, so we can get this recorded?
Yeah.
Your name and address for the record and all that?
Sure.
Yeah.
My name is James McLoughlin. My address is 2028 Center Court Drive, Wenatchee. I am the property owner at the end of Maiden Lane. This is the first time I've actually talked to the city about developing the property. This is all news to me. I've talked to Barclan in relation to the trailhead, and I'm in agreement with it going ahead. But I would be curious how many letters Matt has posted out to, to all concerned parties, because at the moment, the notices are at the very beginning of the trailhead. And it's my assumption that it would have just been a 300-yard perimeter. So I'm curious how many people actually got those letters. I did get a letter, because it's on my property. But I know there's a lot more people that probably would have been here tonight if they had have received the letter. So, yeah, I've been wanting to work with the city, and Frank, I've contacted you about this parcel land. I've owned this parcel land for approximately two years. We're going backwards now forwards. Chamber of Commerce has talked about housing being its number-one priority. It is one of the hardest cities I've ever tried to get a permit to build a single-family residence. And it's just, roadblock after roadblock. The building department is completely broken. The planning department isn't far behind it. And now, in front of the council, things have to change. There's other developers and builders that aren't as brave as me, because I've put my, my kind of head on the chopping board here. And we are just struggling with hurdle after hurdle after hurdle. And it's just, you know, it's getting ridiculous, to the point where I've actually pulled 10 of the most recent building applications to compare my plans with approved plans, and the timeframe in which those plans were approved, and why my plans haven't been approved. So I'm not using this as a, as a soapbox. But this parcel land offers 18, potentially 23 lots, high-income doctors that can't get positions because they can't find homes. And the Board on Confidence Health are desperate trying to find housing. So it's, it's a market ready to be filled. There's a desperate need for this housing. And like I said, this is the first time I've engaged with Steve in relation to developing. And, and Rob knows me, Glenn knows me. And like I said, we're going backwards now forwards with this piece of land.
So, James, I, we have spoken before on your development, and I'll continue to talk to you about, I think specifically with this discussion, are you in favor or not in favor of the annexation of the property that we're talking about this evening?
I am in favor. But when I hear planning, like, how long have they been talking about this, this fire access road? When is it actually gonna happen? I'd like to see, as opposed to money being spent on, on city buildings, that fire happened three or four years ago, and nothing has been done. So I am in favor. But I'd like to see timeframes and, like, people being responsible to get this thing going.
From a city's perspective, we could build it in the spring. The hardest part is, we've got the P U D property where this needs to go through, and it's a difficult way. I mean, it's not that complicated to build the fire road. But we need the P U D's approval to build it through their home, home water property, and that's not easy to do. So part of the money that we've talked about bonding is, is getting some of the roadway done, so that the rest of that can be finished. So when we talked about roads along the Western Foothills, that is one of the ones that we've talked about. Woodward is one, some other places, so.
I think that's been talked about, though, for the last 15 years. That's, that's what I've, I've heard, the option of connecting and actually having a fire corridor, as opposed to a fire egress/ingress. To actually do a corridor around the city makes great sense and develops much-needed land for residential development. The, one other point about that, I just want to make sure that, like, I got a letter, but I think maybe probably two or three other people got letters, as opposed to everybody in Broadview being made aware of it. The chain is, was put in place because we had a burglary. And it's a non-motorized easement right now. So like, it's not by any way, it's more just securing the site right now than any type of hostility towards anyone using the trail. So that's the reason why that's in place right now.
All right. Thanks, James. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else wish to address the council on this public hearing item regarding the annexation of land trust property in the Broadview area? Seeing no other commenters, I will turn it over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to adopt ordinance 2018-40, providing for the annexation of an unincorporated area located directly west of Phase Eight and Nine of the Broadview neighborhood at the end of Maiden Lane, also known as the Schlan Douglas Land Trust Annexation, subject to the provisions of ordinance number 2007-34 and all subsequent amendments thereto.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt ordinance 2018-40, providing for the annexation of an unincorporated area located directly west of Phase Eight and Nine of the Broadview neighborhood at the end of Maiden Lane, also known as Schlan Douglas Land Trust Annexation, subject to the provisions of ordinance 2007-34 and all subsequent amendments thereto. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Pierre Street Right-of-Way Vacation. Gary Owen, who is not here. Looks like it's Rob.
Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of Gary Owen for the Pierre Street Vacation Hearing. We received a petition to vacate a portion of unused right-of-way on the east side of Pierre Street on the 28th of July. And I believe it was two council meetings ago, we established tonight as a public hearing. The, the brief history on this was that when the city obtained the right-of-way, approximately, looking over my shoulder here, how many years ago did we obtain the Pierre Street right-of-way?
In 2008, I believe.
2008. It was thought that the street would be more to the east. And then through the redevelopment of that area, we didn't use all the right-of-way that we obtained at that time. And so we had this leftover 5,200 square feet that is desired by the adjacent parcel C and a little, small little triangle for parcel B. The, because the property was paid for by the original landowners, it's been recommended that we not seek compensation for this right-of-way. And if you have any question, more questions about the history, that was before my time, Mr. King can, can fill in the blanks. But are there any questions before we open the public hearing?
So we can't force them to give right-of-way and then sell it?
In their acquisition, they had, there was a portion of the L I D that was still there that had to be paid off before they purchased the new owners. So that L I D paid for the right-of-way originally.
What about the, on the, would be to the west of that shaded strip that is in our packet map? Do we still own that, or who owns that?
It's all public right-of-way, I think, isn't it? That's the street, is it not? Does it sort of angle that way?
That's correct. That's the, that's the current street.
Okay, okay.
I'm totally fine with this. My only issue is, for whatever reason, there's a valuable piece of property there. Not worth a lot of money, but, I don't know, 5,200 feet at 10 bucks? That's 50 grand in my math. And I, I'm having a hard time just giving it away if the city had the right to sell it.
Well, I, I guess I'd echo that, as well as, in times past, when we've tried to articulate that we wanted a policy in writing on these, and we've been kind of rebuffed on that, and honestly have not kept pushing it ourselves, because we've been schizophrenic. We've had properties that the city had no money in, that we collected payment. And I would submit that if any one of us had a piece of property that was given to us for nothing, we wouldn't give it away for nothing. And as stewards of public dollars, shouldn't we be looking at managing public property for, for the public's benefit?
Mayor, could I give a little background? So the Riverside Drive in Pierre Street was a transportation partnership grant through the T I B Board. And so the requirements to obtain that grant, and the reason why we were even as successful, is we had private dollars involved. And so that's how that right-of-way was purchased, through L I D and, and through private donation. And so those gave us points to give us the T I B grant. So I just want to make sure the history is clear, that that right-of-way was given to us, which leveraged a whole bunch of state money to build Riverside Drive and Pierre Street.
This is a different.
I have a question.
I understand that.
Yes, Ruth, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, do we have precedence on giving away property like this? Or, I, I heard somebody say that we usually sell these off, even if they've been gifted to us. But do we have any precedence of us giving it away without, you know, any compensation when it's been gifted to us?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think in the past, we've sold, I know, I just remember my council, back when I was on council, I think Mike Walker purchased some city right-of-way down on, by Dalco, that we didn't need anymore, that he got the end of the street, wrote us a check for. What did we do in front of Fifth Street, where Loringer's building? We had a strip in there, did we?
We sold that.
We sold that to him, because that way he got to build, to build a bigger building.
And yet, we had another vacation over here, the intersection of Douglas, Palouse, and Schlan, where we just gave it away.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, we're inconsistent.
Right.
And I would like it memorialized in writing, what is our policy for the commercial industrial lands that we're vacating, just so persons who are applying for a vacation also know that there's some predictability as to what the expect, excuse me, expectations are.
And I think the case that staff was trying to make is that this piece of right-of-way was, was acquired in a different. was acquired in a different manner. It was acquired through a grant program and provided to the, in the, and local improvement district in which the property owners participated was a part of the whole development of the area. That piece of LID on that property still existed when this current property owner purchased, which included the land purchases that occurred at that time.
So they'd be paying twice for it.
Yes.
So what's the expectation of the developer? Is the expectation of the developer is that we're going to give it to him for free? Is that what he's believing?
And what that does is it allows them to move their development away from Riverside Drive, but keeps enough land.
Well, I know the reason why he wants it, yeah. But my issue is, is the expectation that he has, if we said, hey, the city will vacate it, but you owe us 50 grand, he's not going to be very happy.
Well, I don't think he'll, he probably, he may not buy it. He'll just move the development over, and then it'll be left to that strip of land that's not used. And that's, I mean, in all honesty, if we were going back to 2008, we would have probably tried to correct the right-of-way description had I know this would come forward, right? We would actually not have got the land donated as part of it.
Right. But had we not got the land donated, this would have been, this would have been part of that, and when he's buying it, he's giving him $6 a square foot, he would have bought, wouldn't he have paid for it then? But, I mean, maybe?
Yeah.
I guess my view is this, if the expectation of the developer is, through dealing with us, that he's getting this for free, I'm okay with that. I want a policy going forward that says every time someone wants right-of-way, we're going to tell them it's fair market value. I don't care how we got it. I don't care if Santa Claus gave it to us, or we got it through an LID.
If I'm okay in this, this is to do it, because again, we've not, we've been inconsistent. But I'm saying that within the next six months, I want to see a written policy and code brought before us that describes how this is, how to guide us in what we're doing.
Yeah.
And guide our constituents to better understand their expectations.
Right.
And we have something to stand behind.
And there's already RCW guidance too, on how to, how, what council's options are.
Right.
Depends on whether it was dedicated as part of a plat versus, and what the timeframe is, so.
So let's get something, so I'm okay with this, but let's get something in the next six months, is there good RCW? Steve, can you get us some language and a code to help us sort of figure this out so that there's expectations going forward?
Yeah, and I think probably in something like this, hindsight being 20/20, my lesson is, is you write these in these public-private partnership development agreements, right? If right-of-way were to be requested back, you'd write it in that agreement, because you can't write a policy for this kind of, you don't know how these public-private partnerships develop. But lesson being, you write, you try to anticipate the future and write it into the development agreements.
Right.
So, and because, but I agree, I understand where you're coming from. On normal vacations, that policy would help us on that.
I think the other part of this that is really critical is, we were working with the hotel developer to shift the project because they wanted to front on Ninth and Pierre. And so we're trying to create buildable lots along Riverside Drive so we can get that continuum of the zoning that was anticipated in the waterfront plan. And so this facilitates that shift and creates the lots along Riverside Drive that was the city's intent with the waterfront zoning.
I know there's another one of these coming on Ripworth Street, for example. Same thing, public-private partnership, TPP, TIB grant, where they donated right-of-way. And so, yeah, we'll have to figure out a.
Is he going to, are we going to, so we're excited about this, and I get it, and the building's going to slide over, and everyone's happy. Are we going to get some right-of-way on the other side then, that he's not using?
There's going to be room for building pads for new, and it, yeah, basically it creates the room to achieve the plan for Riverside Drive, right?
Okay, so you'll get something back to us in the next six months in terms of some sort of code that we can follow, or policy that staff can follow in terms of what they do with these things?
Sure.
I just, I think, we've had a few of them, I think we need to have some consistency as to, if I'm the buyer of that property, I should have known where the property lines were and what I would, and then.
They knew, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't request a vacation if they was for.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Then you gotta say, hey, we need to vacate it. City, what are you going to do? What's your policy on vacations? And we could go, here's your policy.
Yeah.
Right? Don't have that.
Yeah.
All right. So we've heard from staff. Any other questions to staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So by, if this is approved, how many more lots did it create? Any, or just moved it back?
I'll show you, I'll show you what happens. Let's just go right down here. There it is. Okay. So this is the area we're talking about right here. And the reason why there's a strip of right-of-way, do you see this curve radius, this radius return? So they shifted the road over to fit that radius return within the right-of-way. And so it leaves, there it is, leaves a strip. So Riverside, the, our code and our waterfront plan wants the buildings to be fronted on the street, right? Like the Riverside Drive is currently today? So, so the developer of the hotel wants, doesn't, first of all, does not need this entire bit of property. They, it's approximately a 60-room hotel. They don't need very much space in this property, about half of it. And so the objective was, is to push everything as close to, as we could to Pierre Street to leave the opportunity for them to short-plat and create these lots and building pads along Riverside Drive to meet the goals of our comprehensive plan. It's an odd-shaped lot, obviously. It's a tough lot to develop. And so when they presented us with this option, we agreed with this concept and actually suggested, you need to move everything as close as you can to Pierre Street. The city doesn't really want this. This is just a maintenance requirement. It's just, you know, they'll, what are they going to do with it? It's a fairly sizable chunk of property. And when we're developing a public-private partnership, you try to estimate and give yourself the benefit of doubt, the city, to build your roads. So we acquired extra right-of-way, or was granted extra right-of-way. And so that's, that's the, that's the whole.
So you're telling me there's going to be extra pads?
Right along here.
So like one?
No, we're probably, there's probably going to be something in here, two to three pads in there.
Extra because of this?
No, not extra because of this, but.
It's because, so what happens is if they move everything, if they move their building and parking lots over here, then it makes some of this area not usable.
Mike, are they getting, are they getting another room?
What is the benefit, is what he's saying?
Yeah, what, and my other thing, that, I mean, obviously by looking at this, there's nothing, nobody could buy this, you couldn't put it on surplus, nobody's going to buy it, because you couldn't build anything on that, right?
Right.
And there's nothing, there's nothing anybody can do with this. I, right? Couldn't build anything, could you?
Right. Right. And we worked, and they worked through about four or five different layouts. We tried all kinds of different configurations to try to fit the property.
It's no value by itself.
So there's no value, so when you sit there and go, well, it's five bucks.
Add it to the other property, he's going to end up with another lot that's going to be worth 100 grand, maybe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah. But if he gave us 50 and got another lot for 100, he still had 50, is he not?
But if you surplus it, it's only going to be, well, nobody could buy it.
Right.
Because they're going to walk down, and they're going to say, we can't build nothing, can't build nothing.
Right.
So in reality, surplus it, he's going to pay 2,000 bucks, right? He'll be the highest bidder, right?
I'm just trying to break it through.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, just, Steve, on the, on the, the new, I guess, hotel going in there, where is, where is there entry, entry and exit off of, is it going to be off of Ninth Street?
Ninth Street, yeah.
Okay. Because you said a minute ago about, something about access on Riverside Drive, and I didn't.
There is an access point here.
I'm trying to bring things in off of Riverside Drive, that'd be a nightmare.
I think that, I think their main access was Ninth.
Yeah, okay.
In a hotel, they want some exposure towards North Wenatchee Avenue, which is why they want to push everything.
Well, just ease of access.
Yeah. The hotel's an extended stay. Part of the reason that it's, they want to locate here is to complement the apartments. So when guests come and stay at the apartments, you stay in an extended-stay hotel. Yeah.
Good.
All right. Any other questions for Steve, before I turn it over to any member of the audience that wished to address the council? Any members of the audience wish to address the council on the Pierre Street right-of-way vacation, public hearing item? Seeing none. I will turn it over to the council for their action.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve ordinance number 2018-36, vacating a portion of the city of right-of-way along Pierre Street in the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve ordinance 2018-36, vacating a portion of the city right-of-way along Pierre Street in the city of Wenatchee. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Thanks for hanging in there with us. Get that ordinance drafted yet, Steve?
Working on it.
All right. Last public hearing item is item number I regarding interim controls. Mr. Glenn DeVries.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you have a proposed interim control, looking at neighborhood centers, auditoriums, and places of public assembly, and then also provisions for, which would affect sound amplification for public assembly uses, specifically looking at the residential districts, not the mixed-use districts. The history has, the city of Wenatchee has a strong history of looking at neighborhoods and the importance of considering non-residential uses and impacts from those non-residential uses. And that was reinforced in the update of the 2017 comprehensive plan. And staff has become increasingly aware of some definitions and code amplifications of these uses, as far as how they're defined and the range of activities that could occur in neighborhoods. And that there could be, depending on some of the non-residential uses, some impacts to neighborhoods, which could occur from, for example, commercial activities in neighborhoods and from sound amplification from a variety of public assembly uses. Given this, staff is asking for a opportunity to work with the planning commission to evaluate these uses, to evaluate performance standards and the definitions, and come back before the council with a recommendation on this matter. Given the, often we would look at a six-month period, but given the workload of staff next year for signage and housing and a variety of other activities, we would ask in this circumstance for a 12-month opportunity to work with the planning commission. Staff would like to point out, there's one small typo in the ordinance, and apologize if we could look at the, under the sound amplification, and under item six in the actual control under section two, it says outdoor sound amplification for new or existing facilities. That should say new or expanded facilities. This is oriented to sound amplification in the residential districts, not having, during this interim control, not allowing for new or expanded facilities to have additional sound amplification while this issue's looked at. For example, we don't want the Red Sox or the Wenatchee Panthers to not be able to do sound amplification for their games, what have you. This is oriented to a new or expanded facility, not doing a sound amplification during this time period, should a new conditional use permit come in during this time, so the planning commission could get your recommendation on this matter. Do you have any, do you have any questions for staff?
Any questions for Glenn, before we turn it over to the audience? Public hearing? See no questions? Any member of the public wish to address the council on public hearing item number I regarding interim controls in neighborhoods? Seeing no takers. I'll turn it over to the council for their action, if any.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the council to adopt ordinance 2018-35, adopting a 12-month interim control within the city of Wenatchee on the permitting of neighborhood centers, auditoriums, places of public assembly, and places of public worship in the RF, RS, RL, RM, and RH zoning districts. And to set a public hearing on the ordinance for January 10, 2019, at 5:15 p.m., in order to receive testimony and to consider adopting further findings. And this motion notes that in section 10.65.080 sub-six, that they begin with outdoor sound amplification for new or expanded facilities, and the remainder stays the same.
Second.
So a motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt ordinance 2018-35, adopting a 12-month interim control regarding public assembly and public worship, RF, RS, RL, RM, and RH zones, set a hearing for January 10 at 5:15 to hear public testimony with the amendment on sub-paragraph six, to read outdoor sound amplification for new or expanded facilities.
Mayor, I have something I'd like to add.
Yes?
I noticed in section five, with respect to the public hearing, the wording says a public hearing on the moratorium imposed here.
Oh.
The word moratorium shouldn't be in there. This is an interim control. So I, what I'd like to do is just make that fixed in the final version.
Councilmember Kula, should I go right with that?
That's mayor, it shouldn't be.
Duly noted with the change to take out the term moratorium and use the word interim control. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. Let me look at my week. So we did meet with the county commissioners on Monday regarding getting some .009 money for Met Hall Park. I think the meeting went well. Rufus Woods was there, as was Teresa Zepeda and Teresa.
Pandito.
Pandito, mother and daughter, who've been here quite a few times, are both there. So we asked them if we could hear during this month, so hopefully we'll hear back from them. Today, the Transportation Council met Senator Hobbs, who's the Transportation Chair for the Senate. Democrats was there, did mention that with failure of the carbon tax, he was going to promote some sort of gas tax that would also include some transportation projects, not unlike we went through four or five years ago, where we got money for North Wenatchee Avenue and moving the Washdott headquarters. So we'll see how that sort of works through the system, but he did mention that, and then we gave him a tour of the Apple Capital Loop Trail, so he got to see everything. And a bunch of the staffers were with him as well. I didn't get to the Rivercom meet and greet, so I don't know who the final four people are. Did you get to that? Anybody get to that?
I was there, as representative of the city. So, yeah, we've got four candidates, two from with internal.
Okay.
And one is a former resident of Wenatchee.
Okay.
The other one is from Raymond, Washington.
Okay.
And things are still supposed to be a little bit on the QT who they are, so tomorrow we will have a full day of interviews with them and hopefully have a decision by the end of the day.
Okay. Excellent. I don't even know about next week. I can't even think that far in advance. We are meeting on Thursday.
Quite an agenda already.
I think we're going to have quite an agenda on Thursday night, so plan on being here for a while. That's really all I have for now. Council members? And we are moving next Friday, the 16th, so the moving rigs show up and.
No, Monday the 19th.
When you come in, is it, what's that?
The 19th.
Excuse me. I'm moving on the 16th.
Yeah, you show up the 16th.
Yeah. On Monday the 19th, the moving, that's my time to pack my bags, but Tam already got me packed, so I don't think I have a lot to do. On Monday the 19th, the moving truck shows up. You ever get a chance to run over to the third floor, they're working up there, just hit the elevator, go up to the third floor, and you'd be able to see.